Good afternoon, welcome to the Beverly Hills Board of Education Study Session. We are here in the EDC on our beautiful high school campus. Our streets have been recently washed. Thank you very much. Okay, let me see here. So I have three public comment cards. When I call you for public comment, whoever's first just turn the microphone around. You can face us. Or Dr. Braggie is going to do that. I have my, this is the most expensive sound guy, by the way, in the world.
Sergio?
No? No?
Can I please, we don't have the shot clock here, so I'm going to keep your time on my phone.
I'll try a little bit quick. Can you hear me? Hello? Is this on? Is it on?
It's going out, it's being recorded.
Okay, okay. Okay, good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak. Dear Beverly Hills Unified School District Board Members, My name is Sergio Lopez Alarcon and I am currently the World Language Department Chair at Beverly Hills High School. Today I come in front of you to address a current concern that is somehow affecting the enrollment of the third level of our world language program. I thank you in advance for your attention and for the opportunity to listen to us. It seems that there is some concern about recent student withdrawals from world language, three honors. As we know, with the recent changes to our BHHS world language program, a certain number of students coming from Spanish Level Two in the middle school into three honors to the high school decided to leave the class. This cannot be attributed to one single reason, but in reality, to a mix of factors that end up with the student deciding to move places in order to find the right class for them. None of the students who dropped has been invited to leave any class for any level. Or the opposite. We always encourage students to give their best and stay if we truly see that the student is at the right level. But sometimes students disappear from classes without allowing us the opportunity to counsel them, nor we are informed by the counselors that a student decided to switch schedules before it happens. We simply find out once the student has already changed his or her schedule. The three honors level courses are taught at the appropriate level, not harder, not easier, following the established newly created curriculum of our newly adopted materials for world language, Vista Higher Education. The teacher is not the one who determines the level in which the class is taught, but instead a college board is. AP Spanish Language and Culture is the organism that determines what is necessary for our students to know and how to be trained in order to be successful when they arrive at AP and they take the Spanish Language and Culture exam every May. Students must not have a high grade of fluency only in one academic skill, but in all four mandatory skills to master a language, speaking, reading, writing, and listening. As interventions to avoid this scenario, we have provided students counseling. Some of them drop even after not being referred to drop. We have started the school year with a review of content to try to reinforce students' necessary skills and knowledge for the class and determine their previous knowledge. We have re-taught necessary concepts for that specific level. We have provided students with more than one opportunity to be successful at initial assessments. We have made ourselves available to help students not only during office hours, but during morning nutrition, lunch, and after school as students need help. Only a few students have reached out for help. Grammar entry level assessments for each level related to the content learned the previous year were administered to students after being reviewed in the preliminary lessons of the curriculum for that level to check student preparedness and to monitor student progress throughout the current school year. It was found that around forty percent of students enrolled in three honors did not quite master the content from the preceding school year. The number of students who decided to leave the course in total was about twenty-two percent. I'm almost done. By differentiating between honors and non-honors classes, we better meet students' needs. Learning a language is an acquired skill, so the pace, rigor, demand, and expectation are not lower simply because it is not an honors class, but rather we lean into students' abilities to ensure that they feel prepared to continue if world languages are a passion of theirs. As teachers, it is our duty to ensure students' needs are constantly being met without penalty. On the contrary, we have ensured a program where students know that if they wish to continue taking our classes, but are not interested in honors, they have the options to do so. Thank you so much for your attention. Thank you.
Just so short here. Can you guys hear me? Okay, so I'm going to try to do this, but it's so small, so I'll just probably speak off the cuff. So, thank you so much. Good afternoon, President Margot and Board members. I thank you so much for bringing this issue forward. Academics is very important. It's the forefront and the focus of Beverly Hills Unified School District. I want to bring to your attention recently something that I noticed, and I probably noticed a little bit last year, but I didn't put two and two together until this year. And then, of course, I've had several discussions for parents who also shared my same concern. So apparently during our recent back-to-school night at Beverly Vista, some of the teachers spoke of a new grading metric system that they are using. And some teachers said fourteen and eighteen, so there seems to be a discrepancy as to how many teachers. But I understand we're also using this to some degree here at the high school. And I really wanted to bring this to your attention. I'm not sure if this is recording. Can you all hear me? Yes? Can Ms. Marcus hear me? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Noah. So, the new grading scale is being used, is called or referred to as equitable grading. And the scale breaks down as follows. Eighty percent to a hundred percent is an A. Sixty percent to seventy-nine percent is a B. Forty percent to fifty-nine percent is a C. And then twenty percent to thirty-nine percent is a D. I strongly suggest that the board look into this grading system and find out how many teachers are actually implementing this new grading scale. And also take some time to educate parents and inform us as to why this scale is better than the one that we grew up with. It seems that the purpose of the scale, I don't see any other reason than to inflate grades. But if you think about what Mr. Lopez was just saying, that the students are getting to the high school after their third year, after their second year of foreign language, and they're not performing at that standard, it could be very well because we've inflated grades. And I'm not saying that the foreign language teachers are using this mechanism yet. I don't know that information. But I think it's important to really analyze and assess that. Additionally, I think that if we're talking about proficiency levels and we're trying, and if the goal is to raise those, you really, you really are then sending a mixed message all year long if you're inflating grades. And then the CASP tests come, and the stu-, or any other assessment for that matter, students will probably really feel their true performance at that time when scores are released. But again, they're not in sync with report cards and whatnot. So I would, I would really urge you to like make those two, the test scores, the state test scores, and then performance and standards that are being met in the classroom to be in sync. Otherwise, we're getting mixed messages and you're going to be frustrated because you're there trying to solve this problem. And lastly, and I'm really glad to see Professor Lopez here because I did not know you were going to be here. But I am concerned about the foreign language in general. I understand that now if you complete two years of foreign language at BV, not just for Spanish, I think it's for French and Hebrew, that you now have to go into honors three. And I had two students go through Beverly Hills High very successfully. Both of them chose different paths. At one point, I think both had honors and then one of them chose not to do that because he wanted to focus in other areas of his academic career here at the high school, and it wasn't something that was important for him. But they were both successful in achieving entrance into the colleges of their choice because they had enough years under their belt, four years of Spanish, different paths. But the important takeaway here is that other children, other students, need to be offered those same opportunities. Because honors is very different from regular, especially if you're trying to acquire the standards in, you know, the lower standards and whatnot. Everyone has to feel comfortable with their level of acquisition, but we have to be able to allow for different options for them to be successful. So that's it. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Dr. Braggie, Mr. Seaman. I want to speak about the decline in BHUSD's U.S. News and World Report ranking. But I'm speaking because I care about education, not about image. Forty percent of the ranking is based on AP tests, fifty percent on performance on the state standardized assessment test, and ten percent on graduation rate. Let's look at the standardized testing results. Sixty-eight percent of our students were proficient in reading, meaning thirty-two percent were not. One-third of our students cannot read at grade level. Sixty-one percent were proficient in math, that means thirty-nine percent were not. And only forty percent were proficient at science. Nearly two-thirds of our students do not have a basic understanding of science. These tests may be long and boring, but they are not difficult. They're geared to California's standards of education, which are actually pretty darn low. Our kids should have mastered this material. If one-third of our students cannot read, forty percent of them cannot do math, and two-thirds don't understand science at a grade level, why do we have a ninety percent graduation rate? Are you just passing them along without caring whether or not they're ready to take that next step? That's setting kids up for failure, not for success. Now, I would like to address the subject of AP exams since they do account for forty percent of that ranking. We have two general kinds of students at Beverly. We have the academically oriented ones who take honors and AP classes and want to go to prestigious four-year colleges. But nearly half of our students go to Santa Monica Community College for two years, transferred either UCLA or USC, and then work. It is a very successful pathway at our school. And we should not force those kids to be something they're not just to game the ranking algorithm. They don't want to take APs, so they won't do well in the class, which will take a toll on the academically oriented kids' learning. And they won't do well on the test, which would negatively impact our rating even more. Instead, our AP classes should be taught so well that every Beverly Hills student who does take an AP will pass it. Finally, I would like to call the community's attention to the decline in Beverly's statewide ranking. From number, and this comes from one of the supporting documents, we were number eighty-two in California in 2017. And in 2022, we had fallen to number two-hundred-and-seventy-six. We have fallen off a cliff. And it is the children's futures that lie broken and bleeding on the rocks. Please fix it, or BHUSD will die.
Thank you to our speakers. See, I don't get paid anything to do this. Thank you for your comments and for your awareness. I appreciate it. Dr. Braggie?
Thank you and good evening to our board, to our staff that are here this evening, and to our community. Thank you so much for being here. As you can see, we are set up a little bit differently than we normally are so that we can have a conversation about academics. As you heard just recently, about rankings and percentages, and about how we're viewed in many different ways. And it's, will generate some really good discussion. I want to point out before we begin, and I turn this over to Mr. Seaman, is that no matter what report you look at, you know, that's out there, that's being published, we're looking at it and we are reviewing it. And it's important to us and our team to be able to identify those areas, as mentioned this evening, so that we can get a better understanding of why we're ranking the way we are, the percentages. That's all important to us. And so we have spent a great deal of time, as you've noticed as a community, that we have a very robust strategic plan. And we've got some copies back there. I just did part of the school plans because I wanted you to know that this is important to us as well. And we are spending a great deal of time on academics and each school's plan. So that is aligned to what we're going to be talking about today. But I also want it to be really well-known because sometimes when they hear about strategic planning, they think it's the binder that goes up and is put on a shelf. And I can assure you that that is not happening in our school district. And that is due to the support of the board with the administration. We are working very hard on this plan. I wanted to share that with you because that certainly is, has changed over the years here, that we are identifying this information and working together to collaborate to continuously improve. So tonight on the agenda is specifically about the U.S. News and World Report. That's a very high-profile report and ranking that goes out each year. And Mr. Seaman is going to walk us through a presentation so that you can learn a little bit more about how those rankings fall into place and where we are and some of the things that we're doing to identify these issues.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I almost said evening. And thank you, Mahal, for kind of doing my presentation for me a little bit. So I'm going to jump right in. Again, I'm Dustin Singman. For those that don't know who I am, I'm Assistant Superintendent for Education Services. What I hope to do throughout this opportunity is be able to share and be transparent in exactly where we're at. And then there are some conversation pieces towards the end of it. But there also is additional documents that we do have up here due to student names. We weren't able to distribute them widely. But one of the great documents that the Board of Education does have is the 2023 graduating class, exactly where they went. So I was able to pull all the Clear and House data to be able to provide as an example where our kids are still going. And you'll see ID links on there. But you will see that about fifty percent of our students do choose to go to SMC. In addition to, we also have additional packet of Clear and House information, which then allows us to see then from that point of where did they stay and were they successful? Were they able to maintain and stay at that four-year or two-year institution? And then where did they possibly go afterwards? And this document goes back to 2015. So I'm going to jump right into the first thing because I think it's very important for everybody to understand what the actual ranking is before we start to pass judgment on it a little bit. Is the first and foremost thing is it is broken up into a hundred percent. You do receive a percentile, just like any grade. You know, you'll get a ninety percent or a ninety-five percent. The first thing that immediately U.S. News and World Report looks at is your college readiness. And that is exactly what we stated earlier, is how many students are accessing AP. It's an overall percentage, and that's thirty percent of the overall score. Is how many of our twelfth graders, from the time they enter into our institution to the time they graduate, have taken an advanced placement assessment. Then, inside that thirty percent, we actually get bonus scores for those that actually pass the exam. Because the goal of this is, is to be able to allow students to have access to college-level rigor with our support and hope that they can train and be that efficient, effective college student post-graduation. The thirty percent, when you look at it, like the Santa Monica Community School, three years ago, open access, they increased the number of students that are enrolled in advanced placement who are saying they are going to stay while they can. They can stay until they have a college diploma. So that's the idea. I don't know if it's going to happen. It's going to be, not necessarily. It's going to be five, not five. It's going to be a major difference. Eighteen days, there will be a huge gap in hopefully our highest score. It is our curriculum breadth. That is how many kids are actually, actually taking multiple APs. And like we had stated in open comment, we do have a lot of smart kids in our hallways that take more than one AP, and they typically pass them. We have a very high pass rate in our advanced placement programs. Most of our programs and classes, our average score, our threes or fours is not close to sometimes a five. Even in some of our fine arts programs, they're all scoring fives. They're getting perfect assessments on their AP exam. So right there, ten additional points. But again, that's what we're the strongest at, and that's the lowest category, is having multiple AP kids pass multiple exams. What we're not great at is allowing access to more kids. I mean, that's the truth. If we're going to have a hard conversation, we need to have hard conversation. The proficiency with CASP is only twenty percent. So the percentiles in which we refer to, or I'll get to, is only twenty percent of our overall score for U.S. News and World Report. I will also demonstrate that everywhere in the world, unfortunately, in 2017, they introduced the CASP test. So the change between eighty to two-hundred and twenty, there's definitely some impact on the switch of the assessment in which that twenty percent is aligned to. It was introduced in 2017. It's taken in. Before CASP exam, there's an API score that most people in this room may or may not remember. So CASP came in in 2017. And that's twenty percent of our overall score is the proficiency level of how our students do. Here's where we have to have additional harder conversations. In the next two items, reading and math performance is what we identified already in a previous conversation with our strategic plan. We stated the following. We, in that, hold on, let me back up. Twenty percent, which matches your proficiency. So, okay, going back to how many kids are proficient in that twelfth grade class. But the performance piece is within our Title I students, our Black students, our Hispanic students. It is students that we receive additional funds for to be able to support, such as our low socioeconomic students and our EL students. That's twenty percent. And that you'll see when you see our rankings. We identified that through our strategic plan already that we need additional support for our EL students to ensure their success on the CASP exam. Our Black students in math and English and ELA, special education students, and our Title I students. And that's twenty percent. So our proficiency level is high. Our performance level, where we're supporting our students that need, possibly need additional support or we receive other different fundings or programs for, we are not meeting those needs. And then our graduation rate is ten percent. And when you look at, the graduation rate is actually, it reminds you all this, this data is three years old. So this wasn't the class of 2023 that we're being judged off of. This is the class of 2021 that this information and this data comes from. So I'm going to, just to make sure that we kind of all understand each category. So as we move forward, I want to kind of address, when you look at the state itself, the college readiness indicator, we rank one-hundred-and-ninety-sixth in the state for open access to AP. So that immediately sets us off at thirty percent of our grade is at one-ninety-six because we need to work on building additional opportunities for students to have access to rigor, such as getting more students into our honors and AP coursework. Otherwise, we should stop the conversation today. We need to focus on how do we increase access and not deny access or prevent opportunity for rigor in educational excellence. Two, the breadth of it is one-twenty-eight. So we're right back up into it, right? Our smart kids do smart things. They are able to take multiple APs and pass multiple APs. Again, though, when you look at the percentile, that's only ten percent of the overall ranking. Right? So that only impacted us ten percent. Jump down to proficiency, one-seventy-two. Again, under what our current ranking is, it's not great. I agree. Definitely need to work. We, we introduced NWEA to add additional diagnostic testing throughout the school year to monitor growth of each of our students in both ELA math and in science. So we don't, we don't guess when these eleventh graders go and sit for the CASP exam. But that's at one-seventy-two. And again, overall score that's twenty percent. But on performance, in since 2017 to 2021, we've almost tripled and now is qualified as a high school for Title I. We are receiving federal funds for a high school for Title I, identifying low socioeconomic families and students that need additional support, possibly in the academic realm, not just always the financial realm. And that's our performance rank. And that alone, right there, is twenty plus an additional ten for underserved student performance. So it's thirty percent, and we're at six-ninety-two. We have, and we have, will continue to through our strategic plan, work on identifying those students to create those intervention processes. If you focus us as a group and stop, I guess, rattle beating some of the teachers, I love that some of our teachers in the crowd. Our proficiency level is very important, but it's also closing the achievement gap between what our honors kids get and what our regular and our underserved populations maybe need. And that's the educational gap, and that's where this U.S. News and World Report rankings come from. Is when you're looking at, like Mahal had stated, you have college readiness indicator, access to one AP, thirty percent. And then our performance overall with our underserved population is thirty percent. Sixty percent of our score goes directly to opening up access and supporting our students that we have seen an influx within our community, which is different and new and unique to us. And we're learning is to be able to support our Title I students. Again, BV is a Title I school now targeted, and so is the high school for the first time. We're dealing with funds, but it's great because we're able to create interventions like academic coaches and learning labs to be able to support. And then last but not least is our graduation rate. This is the class of 2021, and ninety percent of our graduation, our class graduated. Fast forward, and I'll have data in a second, to prove and demonstrate through our CALPads, which is our legal data that goes directly to CDE, we've already increased our graduation rate since then, twenty-two, twenty-three, and then twenty-three. You'll see it in just moments. moments. So overall, here we are. We are sitting overall nine, top nine percent. I'm not applauding it. I, that is what it is. We are working hard. All of us as a community need to wrap around that. If we want to move that data, we need to look at the way, again, finding ways to push our students into more rigorous courses and really supporting our students that need additional interventions. High school, we're in the top, our California, we're in the top fifteen percent. And then within LA County, we sit right at that same percentile in the top fifteen percent within our scorecard. Now, I do want to bring us back for a second too, in a second. I was also asked to do some comparisons from some of the Board of Education members. One of the discrepancies within the 2021 class is we made a clear decision as administration that we were going to have CASP testing during 2021. Most districts received a waiver from the state and chose not to do. And so some of their rankings are from eighteen, nineteen class and not the 2021 class. So some of the data that I shared and posted on the study session, you'll see holes within that. That's not because I couldn't find it, it's because they didn't take it, they took the waiver. We wanted to take the assessment. It was, it was horrible a little bit, right? We're all masked, asking our kids to take us, but we wanted to identify the educational gaps at the time, in lifetime and not kick the can down the road. We wanted to make sure that we assess our students to identify those deficits or those areas of growth in lifetime. So our scores are the 2021 and some of the schools that we're comparing to were the eighteen, nineteen. So they were pre-COVID and we were in the heat of COVID. Overall, here it is. So here's our, our score. So fifty-seven percent of that graduating class had access to an AP by the time they graduated. Of that, passed at least one AP exam, forty-nine percent. So there is eight percent of our population that did not pass an AP. But guess what? That is only ten percent. The fifty-seven percent is thirty percent of our overall rankings within US News and World Report. So again, I'm just trying to help unpack this for everybody to understand. Proficiency sixty-one, reading sixty-eight, science forty, absolutely. And I'm going to show you comparatives. And so that way we understand that there's a base here and then graduation ninety percent. I'm going to jump into AP first. One of the exciting things that I do not celebrate mediocrity, mediocracy. I do celebrate things that earn a right to be celebrated. For the first time ever, our high school has and is placed on the AP School Honors through College Board. Part of that is, again, just our overall college-going culture that we have worked really hard on creating. Unfortunately, that award won't reflect in US News and World Report until 2007 or 2027, three years out, 2026. And so again, we are doing really great things moving forward. The other part is, is the AP access. We are, they are identifying that we are increasing the number of advanced placement opportunities for students that may not require prerequisites, such as like an art history course or anything within our visual arts process, you know, AP three D art, computer science. Our coding kids not, aren't always the ones that want to take an AP English Language or AP English Literature, but now they have an additional opportunity to take an AP coding cor, or computer science course. So we, we were placed this year in the silver level and we have a really great document that helps unpack, how do we move from silver to gold? The fact that we're on silver is awesome. So I applaud Principal Stewart and the high school team for all their work. And then how do we move though from there? So that's the conversations that we're having internally and staying on the AP access award list and not getting removed from that opportunity. So AP enrollment overall, you'll see, twenty to twenty-one, there was a total number of students, twelve forty versus twelve oh nine. However, what you need to understand is with less students, we got more AP. We are utilizing the AP, or sorry, the College Board potentials list. What it is, is we had introduced, all of us, the SAT suite, students next week will take the PSAT eight, nine on Wednesday and then juniors will take the PSAT eleven, NM, SQT, State Qualifying Test, Scholarship Qualifying Test. And in that test, or through that, by giving them that suite, College Board helps identify potential AP students. When we received that report, we distributed, Shannon's in the crowd too, our assistant principal, and Mr. Stewart were their school counselors. So as they're gearing up for the January elective sessions, we're utilizing that report to encourage students to push themselves out of their comfort zone and maybe take an AP psychology course that doesn't have a prerequisite. That doesn't mean that we're trying to push every kid into AP pre calc, or AP pre calc or AP calc AB or BC. It's about, let's find what your strengths are and try to get you into a college caliber course. So then that way we can teach you to be a college kid while you're protected by us before we do send you off. So you'll see with less students enrolled in the district, we had more students actually taking one AP exam. Again, these, this data won't be reflected until three more years from now within our US News and World Report, but this is directly from College Board. So this isn't an internal data crunch. This is directly from the College Board and you can see in just the three years' time since 2021, we have increased our participation in our overall passage rate. So there's US News and World Report. Now I'm going to come out of left field and introduce something totally, because this is how I roll and you guys know this, is about a year ago, I had the opportunity to do a presentation to the Board of Education of like, we have to pay attention to US News and World Report, both internally and externally and as a community. But we also need to pay attention to the college and career readiness indicators, which is also new. CASP was introduced first in 2017 and then along comes the California Department of Education with another opportunity to want to rank us outside of US News and World Report. And that is our college and career readiness indicators. And so there's a series of different opportunities for us to be able to demonstrate the awesomeness that is happening, but also identify the areas of growth that we still need to work on collectively. So obviously smarter balance is one of that. And so we're going to see that proficiency level, going back to the actual, all students, how proficient are they across the grade levels? Advanced placement, not only, but also on two AP exams. So here we go with the rigor. We need to be able to work towards that. We are not an IB program because you're either an AP or an IB. Very few states are IB in the United States.
IB, what's IB?
International Baccalaureate. College credit courses. So a lot of you know, since we walked in, we've increased our dual enrollment courses, providing college credit to our students while they're on our campus. From 2019 to now, we've, even in our last strategic plan, we doubled the size of our dual enrollment course opportunities. But also a lot of you know, in the community, we run what I jokingly call the freshman fifteen, fifteen credits after school with a partnership with West LA. Again, just trying to find opportunities for our students to increase college credit courses while under the protection of us, whether they be dual enrollment or concurrent enrollment. State sealed bi literacy is something that we never trapped. And it's interesting to me because as, you know, as we come in, you're looking at systems that were in place. And so that's something that we worked really hard on, creating a system and putting it into place. Rural language, we're lockstep with our high school administration and ed services and then cabinet, to the Board of Education. And we can show you the data of how we went from zero to multiple students. And then as we kind of scroll down, university, our UC requirements, we already have that set as our graduation requirements. And then our CTE pathways. Again, another thing that we know that we can applaud ourselves on, and you hear me all the time talk it like a broken record, knowing that this was coming down the pipeline, that we're already prepped and ready to go. We are already worked on and if not completed, three core sequences in all of our CTE pathways. We have an intro concentrator and capstone course in all of that. In our pathways, the successful, and what's great about BHUSD is through reconfiguration, we extended them down to sixth through twelfth grade. In our pathways booklet two point O, you're actually going to see the change where it reads six, twelve versus six, eight, nine, twelve. So students are really making better decisions as they come into fifth grade to say, oh, I can enter here or I can enter there or I can enter here. So they're, they're not making decisions too early for themselves that might impact them negatively down the road. So here's the Calpads data that I alluded to, and this is probably couldn't be any smaller for anybody to read. But I wanted to address two items on this and that is if we were to look at our graduation rates, obviously, one of the things that is an Achilles heel and that I feel like a broken record on here as well, is when you read from one side to the other, you'll see that, so I'm looking under the school code, Beverly Hills, directly across and you will start to see there were three hundred and thirty-one students in that graduating class. Three hundred and twenty-one of them met our standards for a graduation diploma. You go all the way to the right, but however, eight of them chose to take the Chesapeake. I'm not knocking the Chesapeake. The problem in our community that we're working really hard on is students or families will say things like, oh, I'm just going to take the Chesapeake, but then return to us and continue to earn by ed code their diploma, which we have to provide them.
Can you explain what is the Chesapeake?
Yeah, it's, the Chesapeake is a GED. So it's sophomores or juniors sitting for what would be a graduation equivalent diploma, but it's Chesapeake because California, we like to brand it on our own, right? So it's the California version. When students do that, they automatically consider it as an exit from our graduating class. And so you'll see that that does impact like the ninety percent as we're working to ensure that all of our kids are graduating on time. When students say, I'm going to take it as a sophomore, just as a, let's see what happens and then yet they still are planning to maintain registration in BHUSD, it does come against us. And so you'll see that. One of the great parts and something that we're going to talk about, not today, but it'll be in a future study session, Ms. Collins Williams has brought to our attention the alternative graduation requirements for students with an IEP instead of a certificate. So we're going to start to unpack that and explore because you'll see in that class, two of those students received that special education certificate and we can possibly work towards realigning some of our graduation requirements to meet this new state statute for, to add to our graduation rate. That being said though, the great part is as we move forward, in 21, 22, I'm going to reiterate the same data, which is we had three hundred and nine kids in that graduating class, three hundred and three of them though outright earned their diploma with only three Chesapeake takers. So we are educating our school counselors in our community as early as our freshman class, that it's not a good idea unless it's dire needs. If that is your last resort, fine, we'll support you and coach you in taking it closer to your senior year. We also have Moreno Continuation High School. I'm the principal of Moreno and we will take those students instead of taking the Chesapeake and either exiting or staying with us. Come to Moreno, right? Let's find other alternatives to keep you within BHUSD. So we only went to three, but then we had the three special education certificate students. And as this goes to 22, 23, we had two hundred and eighty-seven seniors. Now we're down to only five. At two eighty-two, earned their diploma. We had one Chesapeake and then four students that earned a special education certificate. So our, our data has already changed since these rankings in the 2021 school year. Interventions based on categories, and this is based off our already previous conversations within our strategic planning that started in July. I mean, like Dr. Bregge had stated, this information is newer to the, to the community. We have access to a lot of this and it's embargoed. An example is, like I could probably go to CASP jail because we're actually not releasing the CASP information until October eighteenth. Yet we've already talked about it and we've already utilized it to build out our strategic plan. However, legally, it's being released on October eighteenth as in being recorded. This is awesome. So, but it's good for us because we want to start the school year off, we're trying to make sure that we have interventions in place to ensure that we're making the right decision. So college readiness, and I want to kind of go back to that, is that AP test, one thing that is exciting for this graduating class, and this is kind of our opportunity to like unveil, is we've experienced students in past not being able to take an AP or making a decision between APs based off whether or not financially they can support to pay for an AP. And so one of the things is, is that we do receive Title I funds at the high school and we've identified those students that qualify for the Title I services and we're able to utilize those funds to automatically register. So Shannon and Drew are doing a ton of work on this, is paying for that within the education services budget and work with Cabinet, Dr. Bregge and Rafael and everybody on then utilizing some of the education services budget that is already been budgeted and part of our current budget to cover the cost of the other students. So we are registering all of our students for the advanced placement assessment and taking away, then also, it was funny because we were talking to a parent of a current twelfth grader and she's like, it's not even sometimes that I can't afford it, it's I'm having the argument with my current twelfth grader on whether they're going to take it, but they're enrolled in the course and now we have time to encourage, and then by the time the test comes, they then can't register for it because the registration window already closed. It's about building that confidence with that kid. And so we're, she's like, I'm fighting with my kid right now on you need to register and they're like hesitant about they're in four and what, you know, and so it was a fun conversation to not be able to disclose that we are covering the class and are registering their student. However, this is one way, additional way to help. And here's a data point of why I say this. It's not always about cramming more kids into AP either. I'm going to keep going back to that. It's about opening opportunities and access, encouraging and supporting them to push themselves. But in the 22, 23 graduating class, only eight hundred and fifteen out of the eight hundred and eighty-six tests were taken. We missed out, our kids sitting in AP classes, close to seventy kids did not sit for the exam. And again, a mixture of different reasons. When we ask school counselors for feedback, we ask previous administration for feedback. And so we wanted to ensure as administration and the adults in the room, that we're removing an additional hurdle that might have prevented those seventy kids for sitting for those AP exams. And again, we get triple the points if they pass it, but we just need them sometimes to sit and get that exposure and that experience as well. So that's why that's important to address. Also, since that 2021 school year, we have increased already our offerings. AP Human Geography is one of our most successful courses in the district as far as the pass rate goes. Again, we are running close, I think we're at four sections now. I think four sections of freshmen that are taking AP Human Geography, that they're learning that they have the skills and the, the ability to be an advanced placement student. This year is our first year offering AP Pre Calculus. We used to only offer honors. And again, why offer an honors course if it can't be an AP course? Why not provide, they're having same framework, same standards, why not allow them to sit for the AP exam? AP Art History, we have a full section, we have thirty-one kids in it. You know, it's awesome. That's something that we never had, we were never able to run. AP Music Theory has come into play and AP Computer Science Principles. And we just had Jennifer Hegley for our teacher, for her work on growing our coding program at the high school with the capstone of being that AP Computer Science Principles. Our hopes is we offer honors econ and our social studies department is really eager on moving from honors econ to AP. Again, these are things that other districts had tackled or changed in the interim to get exposure. We have a lot of kids sit for honors econ, but we never switched it over to AP. So that's something that we're working on getting that change. We had a very robust conversation around these next two. One of the things that we are taking ownership of, in a good way, in a, in a amicable way, is we are taking over summer school. So education services cabinet, Beatrice, the admin, site-based administration is supporting and we have a summer school committee with teachers involved on creating more opportunities for our students free of charge to access our resources here. And that's, it's kind of an unveiling really, it's, but that's But that's because we have a grant that is able to support us, it's an ELLP grant that helps support that. But now we control what's truly being offered within that realm. And one of the things we looked at is like the AP Seminar, AP Research, or Freshman Academy, getting our eighth grade students on our high school campus earlier to be able to support them in making connections with adults on campus, those types of things. Doing a sixth grade academy, having our fifth graders come onto campus in sixth grade during the summer, and having that opportunity to be able to learn, but also other team-building opportunities. Those that's just small, but then just academic support and having control of it. Oh, I missed one of the most important pieces. Then the next thing is the California State Seal of Civic Engagement. I'm gonna go back, and I want to go back for one reason. Back to the CalPads data, one of the things that we discussed around the, what's coming down the pipe when the California Department of Education with the College Computer Readiness Indicators is in 20, sorry, in 2021, we had
Are you on page nine or 10?
Sorry about this.
Ten.
Uh, page nine, sorry, page nine.
2021 is nine.
2021, if you look at our graduates with sealed by literacy or graduates with Golden State Seal Merit diplomas, we have zero and zero. You go to 2122, we have zero and zero. You go to 2223, we have 175 qualified for the graduates with Golden State Seal of Merit Diploma, and we have 38 students that graduated with a seal by literacy. So kudos to you and your department. But that almost tripled, if not doubled, if not quadrupled in a school year. Again, part of this is being able to create pathways and systems and put things into place to address. And I will call it, I'm also not up here because I want to play the game. The game was created, we're just a player in the game. But we do have to continue to be reactive to the game and thinking of ways and strategies such as working with our World Language Department two summers ago of identifying students, understanding what the seal would do, creating a system in our data collection tool to let the state see that it's triggered. Same thing with our Golden State. And then the reason I say this is because we're currently working with our Social Studies Department. We started the conversation last year around the California State Seal of Civic Engagement, which is another one.
Can you elaborate, can you explain to everyone what are the seals and what is the significance of them, please?
Yep, and so the Golden State Seal is students within the four core subject areas that hit their graduation requirements but maintain a V or higher within all of those courses and meet a level of proficiency on CASP. And then you go into the, by literacy, and it's the same thing. They can meet, they have to complete Advanced Placement within a world language or complete a fifth year truly. So our Hebrew, which does not have an AP if they reach the fifth year, because we now have the middle school program in addition to ELA, and be able to be proficient or higher within their ELA scores. So it's a combination of that with grades. So again, it's a V or higher in all their world languages, completing the course sequence and the pathway. Same thing with the Civic Engagement. It's around social studies. There is a portion to it with service on it. So utilizing our service learning, we have both programs at the middle school and the high school in addition to proficiency on the Constitution Assessment. And that's the piece that we don't have necessarily, that we're working towards, is that component of how do we introduce it, where do we place it, how do we assess it, and then how do we give credit for it and demonstrate it to the state. But we hope to pull this off by before this class exits the building. And then that way, we'll have additional data in this 22, what year are we in?
Three, four.
23, 24 school year for our Seal of Civic Engagement. Jumping down, this is stuff that we did allude to, is I do think the Board of Education and our community, because you were just as much a part of this with our teachers for sure, and our students, was we introduced NWEA at the high school for the first time ever. We hadn't done grade-level monitoring like this where it's a common assessment for all of our ninth grade students, all of our 10th grade students into 11th grade, to be able to provide us some really robust data. In that data, we had data chats where we were able to bring our high school staff, our English, Science, and Math together to go through it. Just recently, the 612 Math Department met with me personally, with Shannon and Dr. Skon, to further unpack that, what does it mean, what does our pathways look like, how do we open up additional opportunities for access? Everyone is super excited about having that conversation of leveraging summer school to see if there's other ways to get students in higher-level math courses with that support.
Can you elaborate that the NWEA replaced prior assessment programs? And then why, in our opinion, it's gonna be better to lead us to better tracking and better scoring? And then, and that it's different than the I-ready for the elementary school kids?
Yep, and so ultimately, in our district, those, we had utilized a program called Star 360, Renaissance Star 360. And what we identified is it was very successful when it was first adopted numerous years ago. And then as the state changed standards and different benchmarking, and then switched to CASP, we realized that that system was no longer providing the diagnostic information or informative, informative, both information that we needed to, to truly understand how they're gonna succeed or score on CASP exam. That wasn't one for one. So we spent some time unpacking what other school districts do and where they saw climbs in their CASP scores and success. So an example that I use is like Redondo Beach. They saw a significant increase even post-COVID of their CASP scores. And so I sat with their me, had that conversation, took the teams, had that conversation. They provided the three plan, three-year plan rollout. So when people ask, "Do we consult with?" We do all the time. We spend a lot of time with them in different organizations. And so we didn't, even though we knew that that was a very effective program, we still brought in multiple programs for vetting with our teachers, with our administration. We spent some time understanding what the reports would tell us and what that meant towards our final summative assessment. NWEA is great secondary. It's not great elementary. And so we didn't want to do a TK-12 adoption for the NWEA. They pride themselves on success of getting kids to perform well on the SAT, on the CASP exam through smarter rounds, through summative assessment 612. They do not pride themselves on elementary. And so that's why we, we're out there, still we're vetting out, and we identified other districts that utilize I-ready from Torrance, Laguna Beach, Palo Alto uses it in their elementaries. So that's where we went with the I-ready. Again, giving us all that stuff that we need, all the good data that we didn't get from our previous contract. So we kind of write down a contract, get rid of it, introduce new, take some time to train. And I, again, thank our administration, our teachers, our Board of Education, everybody. This is identified through our strategic plan. And then last but not least, graduation rate, I mentioned earlier. Laura has already been on it. She received the information from the state, reached out to Drew and I, setting up initial meetings around unpacking what those alternative requirements for special education and monitoring could be for us as we look at our graduation rates. And then trying to look at how do we get this into play, possibly bringing it to a study session we had mentioned by Laura, to Board of Education. In addition, Learning Lab has been huge. It's something that came within the strategic plan over the last couple of years. Part of that, we even have academic coaching through, we have a grant, A through G completion grant that supports our incoming ninth and 10th grade students, that there's literally one-on-one academic coaching from a former administrator in our district to help ensure that they stay on track, that they don't get off the rails already as soon as they come in. I was a ninth-grade boy, I get it. You know, some of us are squirrely, right? Keep them focused, keep them on track. And then obviously, summer school as well. It's a good thing that we can kind of do a revamp and a redesign with the support of HJ. They are in full support, and we're excited to partner with them. But we, as Education Services, we have taken over with partnership with Student Services and Full Born Cabinet. And so we're excited to bring those updates to the Board of Education, and that would be a Net Services update in the future. I will swear I'll stop talking soon.
It's okay. It's really important.
The, the next piece is, and again, the reason I can't disseminate this to the masses is there's identifiable student information throughout this two packets. So what I'm referencing to those that are listening and those in the crowd is the National Student Clearing House. And what it is, is that is what traps that, that vertical articulation between leaving Beverly and going where? Where are they going? And so as we open up this packet, we turn to chart one. What's awesome and interesting at the same time is when you look at any class of, so, so, sorry, wait. Percentage of students enrolled in college the fall immediately after high school graduation. And you can see from 2015 all the way to 2022. There is a slight dip, and we know exactly what that slight, it's COVID. It's meaning how many kids were willing to pay for dorm rooms and stuff. So at the class of 2022, again, it's long data before because it takes them a while to collect. When leaving, we had 79% of our student population going off to a two- or four-year institution. And that's gotta be honest, and it's pretty average from 82% in 2015 to 79% in 2022. We've really never took a huge climb or a huge dip. There is a part of our population that we either need to work really hard on ensuring that they understand the post-secondary options, making sure that they get more access to. So we just had our college night on Monday, and it was super successful. Over 200-plus families in attendance from Harvard to SMC in attendance to talk to our families and students. We thank the Board of Education for continuing to support our College Counseling Center. But we have consistently from 2015 to 2022 had about 20% of our population, maybe not right out of the gates, go off to a two- or four-year, whether they're taking a gap year, going directly into the workforce for a family company, or taking time off. Again, those are things that we need to continue to consider in this conversation. So I'm gonna turn, so that's immediately, but I'm gonna ask you to turn to page seven of 47. And this is important to understand is, from that 79, though, however, what's great about Clearing House is that number jumped from 79 to 84 as of the first day. Throughout that year, as they would be considered a freshman in college, they may have took fall semester off and enrolled into the spring. So why is that important? It's because going back to the comparatives from 2015 to 2022, you can clearly see that there has not been, in 2015, we weren't skyrocketing through, nor were we below us. We have scored almost identical across from 2015 to 2022. As I kind of keep going, what's another great thing to look at is the conversation around two versus four. A lot of people took the, decided transparently, "I believe in data. I don't believe in assumptions and conversations" that happen without data involved. If you look at percentage of students enrolled in college at any time during their first year, again, looking at first or second semester, we see, which is the red line, which is, you know, it's, could be in 2015, it was
What page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm page eight.
Thank you.
Of 47? Again, 84 to 83, so we're one percentage behind what we were in 2015. Now, it breaks down for us two versus four. And again, kids were going to SMC in 2015, you guys. This isn't a new phenomenon. In 2015, 19% of that graduating class enrolled in SMC or two-year institution. In 2022, 18%. We actually decreased by 1%. So 1% less of that 2022 graduating class enrolled at SMC.
And actually, it was up in other years.
Correct. In 2017, which we referred to earlier in open comment, was at 22% of that class went to SMC. In four-year institutions, in 2015, 65% of that graduating class went to a four-year institution. And in 2022, 65% enrolled in a four-year institution. I just use this because this is the truth, and this is the actual answer to what some people believe was 2017 could have been a golden year. I don't know what that means. But what I do know is the same percentiles of that graduating class, more kids were in that graduating class. True. But that's an enrollment conversation and not an academic integrity conversation. So kind of summing this up as a whole, here's the full list of where the kids went from the class of 2023, just for your guys' reference, to be able to see the wide variety of institutions. But in the same packet, what I do want to draw our attention to is, in those years, and again, this is directly from the Clearing House information. It's on page 45 of 47. Our number one institution that our students go to, and it's no surprise to anybody on this, in this room or viewing, is Santa Monica College. So that is our number one from when the data was starting to be collected in 2015 to current. We had over 1,000 kids attend. Again, but we do know most of them, and what Dr. Bregge had mentioned in a previous conversation is we're working really hard with SMC on their articulation data. We want to know then where do they go from there? Do they go to USC? Do they go to UCLA? Or are they going highly? Where are they transferring to? Because SMC has one of the highest transfer rates from their associate's degree in our whole, almost state when you look at compared to other two-year institutions. Our second college is University of California, Los Angeles. So from 2015 to here, our second highest for our students to attend is UCLA. The majority of this list is UCs. The majority of our students do choose to go to a UC. The third on the list is UC Berkeley. The fourth on the list is UC Santa Barbara. Then the fifth on the list is California State University Norridge. Then the University of Arizona, which is a very prestigious institution that's very difficult to get into. We have University of San, California San Diego, University of Wisconsin-Madison. USC on our list, sorry, Mary, our Trojan. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. It's the 11th top of where our kids are attending post-Beverly.
Many transfer from Santa Monica.
Yes, correct. And to UCLA, too. So that number, this is right out of the gate. This isn't transfers from SMC.
Like they might defer them for one year and let them.
And also, this is, if I'm understanding, not exhaustive because it just brings them 1 through 25. Like, for example, last year, we had one or two go to Stanford, which is not on this list because they're not in the top 25 of where our kids go.
Yep.
Okay.
Hundred percent. And that's why I wanted this to have most updated document of like, where are some of our students choosing out of the gate? And that's where this is.
This is just from this past graduation class.
Correct. Hundred percent. Now I'm counting the UCLA kids on here. How many did that number increase? That being said, I hope I didn't put you to sleep.
No, it's really important. I think it's really important to know that, that the US News report is based on 2020, 2020, 2021, which we were in, you know, still COVID year. And when I looked at the data that, you know, many schools didn't do testing that year, so they went back to their 2017 or 2018 data and where we today versus our 2017, 2018 data. I don't feel that we're off a cliff. I think that we have to put into perspective the numbers that from 2020, 21, which everyone was expecting there was gonna be a hit from COVID, and all the things that we've put into place since then to address these issues. And certainly, that's gonna take time to recover from COVID. And I'm not belittling at all that And I'm not belittling at all that we want to do better. And I think that's what the focus has been on the strategic plan the last two years, when we started addressing all of these issues in particular, making more APs, increasing the pathways, and putting more emphasis on how do we support with interventions and providing tutoring and really looking at that data. So I'm really encouraged to see that improvements that you've been seeing with regard to that. But we also have many improvements still to make, and we have a road to go. And there's, you know, we establish educational excellence, and that is our goal. And we, you know, we have a long way to go. But I certainly think that it's important to put into perspective from 2020, 21 to where the things that we're seeing today in '23, '24, because it's quite different.
Yeah, I actually did, was not aware myself that these figures are stale. And I'm happy to hear it because, in other words, the bottom line is we're already doing better than what these numbers reflect. And I'm certain that we're going to be, continue to improve. You know, we are at around thirty-two hundred kids at this point. And I'm invigorated by that, the fact that the entire state and the entire country, public schools are going down in numbers, and we actually have gone up by about seven percent. I don't think it's anything that any of us take lightly. I think it's something we look at very seriously. Can you elaborate for our community that the strategic plan is something that starts at TK for us? Because I know that the focus is very much on the high school scores. But moving forward, I think it's really important for the community to know that for us, excellence starts at TK. So can you just share a little bit about that? I know the high school's under heat tonight. But this is something that in our long-term plan is we're starting from when they're four and five years old.
A hundred percent. In every conversation that we have, we've never isolated just the high school in any of these conversations within our leadership team or even cabinet. It is always Principal Kabor, Principal Bugby, Principal Dr. Scott. They're all part of that conversation always of, how do we ensure that there's a strong foundation to the house? And then how do we build it up from there? I do think what I ask, and I'm going to ask before I allude a little bit more to the strategic plan, I think my ask always, too, is when we worked on the strategic plan so hard to create interventions all the way to TK, identify utilizing I-Ready and NWEA and finding the deficit areas, so there is a growth that students have, and then encouraging our families to take advantage of these interventions. That's where I want us always to encourage, is when you have a friend that gets a phone call and says, oh, Principal Kabor is asking my student to participate in this thing, encourage them to take advantage of it. Sometimes we get pushback when we're creating or implementing new changes, predominantly around intervention. Like, we are offering you tutoring or something. Like, we need you to take advantage of it because we want to be able to ensure that there is no educational gaps created as early as TK, or first grade or second grade, to ensure success moving forward longevity. And so in our strategic plan, we even have career addressed. At the, in our strategic plan, at the TK Kinder for second, we have career days at the elementaries by design because we want to introduce that conversation. We're not waiting till the high school to talk about college and career readiness. We're tackling it already into the elementaries. Like Hawthorne PTA was a huge support of Principal Kabor's vision last year.
Career Day, absolutely.
Career Day, and then moving forward. So it's not even just around the academic interventions and the creation of strategic plan. It's around even the other aspects of that plan, like the career development and the college development, utilizing Naviance in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, of getting the kids logged in or getting the kids having access to mental health supports to make sure that they stay in school, opening and launching the Bulldog Aid Centers. Another thing that's super important to consider in this conversation is our kids need, you know, we, there's, you know, our kids need that mental support to stay in class to achieve academically.
Colleagues, can I go to Mrs. Marcus first, please?
Sure.
Patient. Mrs. Marcus, do you have any comments or questions?
I have some comments and some questions. I was under the impression for a long time that the A through G requirements are required for graduation. Yet we show that the kids that graduate, many of them don't complete those requirements. Can you explain that? Because I thought that that was required by graduation.
Did you hear that? Yeah, yeah. A through G is our graduation requirement. And it's predominantly, you need to understand that when students enter our building as an incoming ninth grader, and we have them for four years, they're held to that standard. A lot of the discrepancy between those earning a high school diploma and the A through G met requirements are two things. Either they transferred in from out of state or out of country, which we have a lot of students that do, come in as a freshman or a sophomore, or even sometimes as a junior. We have some seniors that have transferred in this year. And we have to take the credits from the previous institution in which they graduated from, whether that be from Israel or from Texas to New York to France. So that's part of that. And then any student that earns, unfortunately, a D or F, still, sorry, a D, which is part of our policy, is a passing grade in our board policy at the time, will not meet UC approval unless they retake it. A lot of them do retake it and try to fight that through the admissions process. But that is also a trigger. So if they received a D, which is passing in most public institutions in TK through 12th grade, or they come from another place. So that's the discrepancy between the two. It's something, Mrs. Marcus, that we do look at. We look at, like, in 11th grade, Principal Stewart pulls Ds and Fs consistently to continually to monitor at five-week, nine-week, in addition to our school counselors. But we also are looking at who are the kids that are moving in from other places? And sometimes I even have to waive some credits for some of them to ensure, like, we have a personal finance, personal financial literacy requirement that if it's a 12th grade student, we still need them to take a math science and English. We may waive such five credits to ensure that they meet that graduation cohort. Those types of things.
Thank you. I was just going to think about the honor roll that the school got. We had two out of the three were gold, and one was silver. And since all three were not gold, we were given silver on the three items that were, that are judged us by. So I would love to mention that because I don't think we should look at silver as being not as good as gold. But there were two items that were gold. But in order to get gold, you had to get three golds. And my question on those is, that particular thing, we noticed the 2023 standard, but they set standards for 2024 now. Who set those standards? I'm referring, Dustin, to the other packet that you gave me.
No, Mrs. Marcus, thank you. It's like I paid you to bring this up because I totally spoke so fast right past it. But I do appreciate that. Is when we were addressing the AP Silver Earning Award, thank you, Sheridan, thank you, Drew. Again, I keep applauding the high school administration for all their work. Is, there's three categories. There's college culture, college credit, and college optimization. And we do score gold in college credit and college optimization. And they, College Board, sets the twenty-four standards for us.
Okay, thank you.
But it's great because this guy, Mrs. Marcus, is something that we're unpacking within the high school administration, but also in our full-blown leadership team to make sure, like, we were mentioning earlier, that we are tackling this TK through 12th grade. But yes, we are gold in two of the three, but we did earn silver in one. And that's the area that we will primarily focus on, but we will continue to focus on all three.
And as you said, we've never had this award before, which is interesting, even in view of the fact that we did, you know, in years past, we did much better, and yet we never got this award, as I could tell. I don't know if that's true.
That is true.
Okay, well, I'd just like to make a few comments here about the presentation I was able to get it ahead of time and go through it. And I'd just like to say that it's, I have ambivalent feelings because, or some of it, I feel that I'm sad that we didn't do better than we did, or that we could have maybe done a little bit better. But I feel that we are, we can hold our chins high to certain things. And I think that that's important. But we can always, always improve. So that's what I'm looking forward to. And the other thing was, we need to provide, and we are providing the kids with the opportunity. But I have a question about this subject of world geography. Now, I understand that world geography, is there a precursor class to that class? Because I don't know what it would be if it's an AP class. Is there an AP Human Geography? Or is Human Geography standalone, and then they can take an AP class with it?
Yep, so this is our third year, I think, I'm pulling back in the file cabinet, it's way in the back of the brain. This is our third year offering the Advanced Placement Human Geography course. What it is, it's a comparative course, which takes not just the cultural, societal, financial, locational, that's not a word, location, physical location, resources, and basically compares all of those aspects, almost like a sociology course. And there is, the prereq truly is our students that are working through the Honors Program in Social Studies at the middle school level. But it is open access. We have students that have requested to take the course as a ninth grader. But we also have students that are 10th, 11th, and 12th graders that didn't have that opportunity and have come back and enrolled in it. So there are some upper-level students that have said, oh, that's interesting. I want to try it now, and have taken it, even though there are some sections that maybe are only freshmen, but there are some sections where there's two 12th graders in there.
Okay, I, okay. So I just want to thank you for this very comprehensive report. I know you put it together with a great deal of heart, shall I say, and great deal of knowledge, and pulled it all together. And I hope that as we go forward, we can improve. The most important thing is, can we improve? And that would be our goal, as we always do that in a strategic plan. We always want to do better. So hopefully, with the near, we can, by next year, have even better numbers than we had this year. And that's your job, and that's what you have to work on, of course. So thank you again, and sorry I couldn't be there, but maybe next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
So I just want to add something as well, that like, back in 2017 and 18, that, you know, there wasn't a lot of consistency with the leadership teams. We didn't have systems in place where teams were meeting as a full leadership team, and then by middle school, elementary, and then by high school. And so that has taken a long time. You probably heard us say over and over and over again that, you know, when we identified ourselves, we were a system of schools instead of being a school system. Well, that takes a very long time to get that back on track and get to become a school system. Having the mission vision that we have, educational excellence, that has taken a very long time. Of course, COVID had something to do with that, to derail that. But everybody has been working so hard to get to where we need to go. And I think just the highlight of what you had said, Mrs. Marcus, and some of the other questions have been, you know, being able to identify those areas. And so that takes a great amount of time, professional development. It doesn't move quickly. It's not going to change in a year or two.
Thank you, Dr. Brege. Doctor Stern?
Thank you, Dustin. Amazing information. And I really feel good, especially about all of the resources that are offered for children who are college-bound. One thing I want to say, and I think it's important that the community knows this, is about a year ago, Yale University, or Yale Law decided to stop participating with US News and World Report. They started to say that some of the methodology was really flawed. So like any measurement system, I want people to be aware that there's always flaws. And it's particularly interesting why Yale Law School, and then Harvard Medical School, and a number of other schools pulled out. Yale's particular reason was that it was, it was sort of penalizing them by associating the students who graduated from Yale Law and went on and didn't get, weren't employed, they had fellowships. But, so it was a ding saying, oh, your graduates aren't employed. So you can see how that's a misinterpretation. They all went on to have fellowships. And also Yale Law has a lot of resources to help families from underprivileged backgrounds. So Yale made, Yale Law made the decision to stop cooperating with them. So I'm just saying that because I think it's important that we realize there are lots of metrics. It's very important to us, I know, because it helps us with our ratings. But it is not the only way to measure how great we are as a school. And I suspect that increasingly, there's going to be a lot of institutions that withdraw participation from US News and World Report. Another issue I have, or another thing I want to discuss, is if you look at the, what's called the California Dashboard, and a lot of educators have access to this. And it just summarizes, you know, the CAS scores. And I made this just because I wanted to understand from 2022, how we did, as, you know, just looking at the different schools. And I saw some very interesting things. For one thing, I noticed that the elementary schools, so Hawthorne and Horace Mans, as of last year, where the zero here is the state standard, right? I don't know how that's set. But if you look at this, look how amazing the elementary schools did. And then something happens, I guess, I want to say developmentally, because I know we have great educators, but look what happens to the math. This is last year's snapshot. These aren't the same kids, right? I mean, these kids will, are now, or whatever. Yeah, but look at this. So math is underneath the state standard, right? Over to a thousand different school districts. And the high school is quite a bit below. But they started here, where they were well above. But, so I just thought that was interesting. And then another notable thing is that we do well with English Language Arts. I mean, we do relatively well. We're all above the standard. I know California is a huge state, and there are a lot of Title I districts. There's a lot of disenfranchised districts, so you can say, well, yeah, big deal. But it is, I mean, I do see a lot of strength in the English Language Arts. But I've seen a math issue for sure, once you get to middle school, and for sure when you get to high school. And there's a lot of factors. I wouldn't say it's just the teachers. I wouldn't say it is the teachers. I would say there's a lot of factors developmentally. But that, that, I thought, was very interesting. Again, this information is pulled from the California Dashboard. The U C puts it on, and you can play with it, and look at all sorts of parameters. And then the other one, that I'm looking at. It's the other, the other graph. Oh, no, this is, okay. So again, this was 2022. And again, how much above or below the standard where the yellow line is the California state standard? So there's two districts here, Hollis Fairness and Lockton Gata, that did extraordinarily well by all measures, who did this, I mean. You know, but still, English Language Arts still continues to predominate. So it's almost like math continues to be something that's difficult either to teach or for young people in the grass, because consistently, English Language Arts, even for these really high-performing districts, the English Language Arts is higher. And I suspect it's because, you know, we've all heard the mandates over the last 20 years, which is kids need to learn, read, literacy, literacy, literacy. And it's like, you know, what about the math issue? And I know we're having parent nights, and I think it's amazing that we're doing that. But if I could just draw a conclusion as a, as someone in education, that the math is just really hard, just statewide, and our high school. It's just an issue. But I just wanted to look at that because I know that, I think, as you said, fifty percent of the state assessment goes into our US News and World Report.
So twenty percent is how our kids do? And thirty percent is, very strangely, how our kids do compared to what the US News and World Report expects them?
Right, see, it's a flaw. Anyway, so if that's really fifty percent, then it really does behoove us to focus in on this math decline. Um, that happens, you know, on a number of levels and I'm sure leadership is addressing that.
And my question with that as well is what, does that look similar to 2017 or 2018? When I was looking at your numbers that you showed us, it looks like we were. This has been a trend that has been there for some time. So not just for our district, but for other districts as well, where the math has been a challenge and.
Yeah, I mean.
Language arts does better and people dipped during not having those scores and not in 2019. But then when you saw their 2022, they went back to like where they were in 2018. So similar, not a downward trend, but similarly had that, that math being lower.
Yeah, and I can share some scores with you. Um, remember 2017 was the first year that was introduced, 2018 was a norm year, so you start to pick up the scores around 2019. So an example would be, uh, I, I, I'm going to pull some from like what we shared, like El Segundo High School is a very similar. Um, uh, school district like ourselves, it's a Singleton High School, Singleton Middle School and some elementaries. El Segundo in 2019 scored at 78.7% proficient math, but then in 2022 is at 56%. So they dropped 20 something percentiles and we, um, and then, sorry. And then Palisades Charter, uh, 45.6 in 2019, 41.8.
Yeah, Pali High went down too.
Yeah, and then the California State, and that's not what we set ourselves to, but what you're alluding to is. Uh, in 2019, they're at 32% and in 2022, they're at 27%.
So would, would you say, if I may tag on to what you were saying, would you say that, that you have a.
We're not proud of that. It's making it sound like we're proud, we should be proud of Mary.
No, I don't, but that's not true at all.
And I just want to clarify something.
One second.
May I clarify something, Noah, please? The percentage that Dustin talked about, 18% is, it's, it's trending is correct, but you have to take into account that our enrollment is also declining. And anytime you do mathematics, when your enrollment declines or any number, your percentage is also going to increase. Just, just, so it's, it's not that we're doing better, it's that our enrollment is going lower.
So our, I understood that our enrollment went up by 200 this year, right? So we went up by about 7%.
It's TK.
So we had TK last year. We had TK last year.
We have more, yeah.
Yeah.
I saw the article.
Yeah, so back to what Manu was saying though, do you have a specific plan on the math subject? You know, since this is something that we're seeing, um, we're not where we'd like to be. You know, is there an overall plan or intention and has it already been set into motion?
Yes, so last year we set out with piloting at our elementary level. So some of them that have elementary students in the crowd, we know that. Uh, we had already started a math leadership team, was primarily focused on the foundational grades. Introduction to the IREDDI was last year and we saw an increase and we saw an increase in our elementary full location from the 22 to the 23. We're replicating that exact same standard and I, like I stated, I just met with the 612 math department last Wednesday for a full day. Working on exactly this is unpacking essential standards, understanding what it means to be an algebra kid, a geometry kid, an algebra two kid. Uh, Shannon was there, Dr. Scott was there as well. Um, and that's exactly what we're doing. Introduction to NWEA, so we have dated that we're not guessing when the kids get to 11th grade and they're just now sitting for the CAS exam. And those are things that other schools had in place. And again, we had to dismantle, rip out Renaissance Star 360. It takes some time to be able to yank that out of some people's grasps, right? And introduce a new concept, they changed management idea, um, and, and we're getting there and it's. I, I, that I am excited for and no one up here is applauding um our scores. We're celebrating certain things like the fact that we are on the College Board AP list. Uh, and it's going to be published, that's pretty darn exciting for anybody in the room. That's only going to benefit our students in the long run by having our name appear on the College Board list. Regardless of the institution takes AP or not. I, I, could I, while I'm on that, sorry, Noah, don't hate me. Um, one question that comes up a lot and I will, uh, battle is. Anytime any institution offers an advanced placement, the student will always automatically be judged whether they took said one AP. It doesn't matter the overall number of APs. So, so that's, that's a rumor in the community sometimes where ki- kids or families will say, why are we introducing another AP? Because it's going to look worse for that student's transcript and that is incorrect.
There's no dilution, like if you have more APs, it doesn't work against you.
No, the second you offered an AP, it automatically works against you. And so, but there isn't an example, 40% of the overall US News and World Report is you have to offer AP, right? None of us created the game. Uh, but be able to provide additional opportunities for open access for maybe non-pre-reqs. We can't all of a sudden force everybody overnight into AP calculus and that's what Dr. Brady was saying is. Again, we're working on that foundational, but we're not forgetting middle school and high school. We are working hard with middle school and high school, but we're also ensuring that we are not creating any additional. Um, educational gaps, whether post-COVID or not, like these TKers as an example. Um, COVID didn't impact them, they're home anyway. I mean, COVID impacted them, but they didn't miss out on that instructional piece. They're coming into school normal, right? They didn't have two years, whether that be virtual or not. We don't want to, we want to make sure that that foundation is so solid moving forward as well.
Yeah, math is, oh, sorry.
Yeah, you, you can finish up this.
I just was going to say math is definitely a building blocks kind of a thing where you can't just step into it two years later. So, um, can you also speak to, last week was week six, right? So how often are you planning on having these math chats? So that, you know, you're really supporting the effort and it's not a one and done situation.
Yeah, and so, um, actually today, I think, um, sorry, there's, uh, today is second and third grade teams actually had their math opportunity to talk. Um, and so we're, we're, math is a primary focus, but I also want to say is everybody's a focus too still like world language. You know, we have our meeting coming up, um, that will do our full articulation, sixth through 12th grade, right? Um, so multiple times throughout the year.
Got it.
Every time we do a diagnostic as well, so anytime we do a NWEA, immediately they'll be following a, a data chat for specifically. Monitoring the student progress outside of then what we're talking about last Wednesday. We're really now looking at our curriculum and the teaching and learning portion of it. Uh, part of that is looking at summer school opportunities. Are we providing free opportunities in our community to provide math enhancements? Uh, math, uh, opportunities to close some of those gaps and then maybe in two years' time or in a year's time. We can close some of those gaps that the students have and they're caught up or past that. They're now placed into an honors level.
Thank you.
Okay. I have some thoughts here and then I'll be happy to go back to my colleagues if you happen to want to contribute. Um, let's, let me tackle, well, first of all, Doctor Stern, to your, your graphs that you brought up. Something I've noticed in education with math is I've never seen a core curricular subject go through as many changes. On a national level as math. And I think what is, what is, part of it is textbook publishers. Um, and, and textbook adoptions and the opportunities people, um, companies, publishers took advantage of and trying to jump on it. Um, there's something to be said about maybe everybody needs to take a breath on that and say, well, you know. If scores are going down this much on, on a state or national level with math, maybe they shouldn't have tinkered with it as much. You know, maybe we should have, at some point it was working and now it's not. So we have to ask ourselves as a, as we try to be a, a district that hopefully is a leader in education, hopefully. Um, is all of the new math effective?
But look how well, sorry to interrupt, but look how well those elementary schools did last year. I mean, you know, the Horsmann and Hawthorne did quite well on math, I mean, above, quite above the standard. So I, I feel like it's like a developmental, something goes on as a factor to hit the middle.
Or it could be how that's new math translates into middle and high school. You know, how that new approach to math translates, maybe, maybe, maybe that age needs more roadwork, maybe. I don't know, I'm not the educational scientist, I'm just saying it's a, it's a factor to consider. I've never seen a subject evolve as much as mathematics, you know? Reading is reading and then he just left alone and people read and our scores are, right? But they, LA tinkered with open court, but then they kind of said, nah, that didn't work, so just read books, right? That's what's, that's what's happened. Um, APs, so there were, you had said, how do we increase access, right? So the question I ask you is how do we increase access? If that's one of our issues, how do we increase access?
So I think it's a couple ways that we, I've seen institutions be very successful at it. A former district, Santa Monica. Um, one is removing some of the arbitrary roadblocks. Again, this is an internal dialogue and conversation sometimes with um, uh, our, our teaching staff, the way that our pathways are created. So, um, what are the true requirements? What are the true essential questions that a student needs to master to be successful, to be placed into that course? Very clear understanding of that and being able to articulate that so that we can encourage kids. Um, again, utilizing our summer school as an opportunity to increase participation. Um, you know, if we have some eighth grade students on the fence, maybe creating a summer intensive to prep for AP human geography. Would be an example of what we as a committee are considering. Um, looking like FST, which is our um math class between Algebra II going into Precalculus. Where families or students or teachers may not feel that the kid is strong enough in Algebra II to go directly into Precal. So we've, we've have been placing them into FST, which is like trigonometry. Where why don't we provide that during the summer with our own teachers over extended period of time? So then all those kids are going from Algebra II to Precalculus.
But can't they also go to Prof. D?
Yeah, they can too, based on, then you have AP stats as a opportunity, but that's what I'm saying is. Based on their career choice, like if they're going into education, nursing, we'd say go to statistics, right? But if we knew that they're in engineering and they're sitting as a 10th grader. It, you know, in geometry going into Algebra II, or they're an 11th grader in Algebra II. And we know that they may not get a calculus, even if it's pretty on their transcript. That impacts the decisions that the post-secondary options, they may not get into an engineering school.
Right.
I mean, that's the reality and so how do we remove that roadblock to ensure that then as a, you know, a 18-year-old male or female? They have every opportunity to go into an engineering program. Because we've created it, whether they take advantage of it is what we all have to work on as parents.
So the basic answer to the question is removing roadblocks.
Yes.
Helping reach access and removing roadblocks is, is site-related, not policy-related, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, second question. Uh, would you weigh um passing the APs as, for those that take it, as more important than 100%? Taking the APs who are taking AP classes? Which one would you put the emphasis on?
So philosophically, and I'm a former school counselor, for those that may have forgotten. I always believe in why are we not pushing our students to the most rigor with our protection? While they're living with you, before we send them off and you're spending $72,000 a year for University of Michigan? And then they come home in six months. And so why aren't we as a community all agreeing that we will encourage and push and, and motivate our students? To get into an AP by the time they graduate.
Well, talking about those that are already in APs. Do you think it's more important for them to sit for the exam or to do well on the exam? Can we tackle both problems because there's, there's two issues.
Well, it's, it's.
We don't have 100% taking the exam that are taking the class and atavolos that are taking it, not 100% of passing.
We don't, if a student takes the AP class, we do not get any credit gaming the game. If they are in the class, we do not get credit for them being in the class. We get credit for them sitting for the exam, so it's exams taken. And then if they pass, even if they only take one, then we get uh triple the score at that 30 percentile mark. If the kid has multiple APs, it takes multiple, then that's 10% of that, so that's 40%.
How is it not helpful to get a one or a two on the AP exam?
How is it not helpful for a student to sit in a course for a year to learn college level curriculum and instruction? To prepare them and hopefully make it when they go to SMC or Harvard, it's easier on them.
So our regular classes are not preparing our kids to go to college?
Oh, that's a good one. Our regular classes are preparing students to go to college and I just provided data on the cross comparison from even 2017 to now. What we need to do a better job of is encouraging our students to step outside of their comfort zone and try to push themselves. If you're sitting with an A in a regular course, which I think that's excellent, I think that's great, you're at standard. Could you try something a little outside of the box that may make you feel a little bit uncomfortable? It may make you work a little bit harder, 100%. And if that outcome is a one on the AP, you've had that experience and that's awesome for you. Why would that be, I can't engage, there, like, well, there, there, there isn't a negative outcome on this if the student understands the experience. So uh us having all of our students sit for the SAT exam is a prime example. We have all of our students for the SAT exams. However, um, you know, working with Laura's department, we do have some students that may be not develop. Developmentally appropriate at that time, but we're giving them that experience like all students should have that experience. Is having access to college level um courses. And so you'll see the California Department of Education is holding us to two standards now. It's not just AP, but it's dual enrollment and concurrent enrollment. It's getting kids, there are high schools out there that kids are graduating with their associate's degree with their high school diploma.
See Dustin, there's one thing to want students and encourage students to take an AP class, at least one while they're here. For the experience of doing. Um, it's, it's not to say that only that class will show you what it is or get you ready for college.
Correct.
It might expose you to college level material, but our high school will get you ready for college. That, that should be the message. Um, as far as believing that, I believe that if a student signs up for an AP class, registers for an AP class. They, it should be an implied contract where they should take the AP. Now, you mentioned earlier about removing roadblocks and something about funding for those students that are have financial hardship and paying for an AP exam. And that we could find funding for that to take that excuse away. Because I, I don't want students to take an AP class who don't want to sit for the exam. Because there's, there's, it, it, they're taking advantage of a situation to weigh their GPAs, correct? And at the same time, hurt the district as a whole by not taking the AP, the AP exam. And I don't think, I think that's, that's intrinsically somewhat selfish, you know? There, there needs to be an understanding. Okay, you want to take an AP class, here's, here's one, two and three of taking AP class. The rigor, the dedication and the implied idea that you're going to take this test. And if you can't afford to apply for it, we're going to help you. But that should be implied when you register for an AP class. And if we're going to raise the standards in our school, that's kind of where that should be sitting. And it's not saying we're going to make them take it, because I'd like to clear up, before we move into AP for all mentality. How about the ones that are taking the class, take the test? How about the ones that take the test, pass the test? Let's work on that, I think that's a smaller chewable bite, right? So um, that, that, that's as far as my, my diatribe on the APs. Um, the, um, I'm, I'm sorry here.
No, why do you think of that? Can I add one thing? To piggyback off of that exact statement is that's exactly our focus. The first data point that was provided was there are 76 kids that sat for the AP class. Got the extra credit towards their GPA, did not for whatever reason take the assessment. That alone would have shifted our ranking to begin with, right? That off the bat. There are prerequisites for courses that are undeniable and it's not like tomorrow, again, we're going to have 75 kids in AP Calc. That's never gonna, I, I've literally, guys, I've ran, how many kids are sitting in AP Calc in Laguna Beach, Palo Alto? I have graphs for graphs for graphs and this is what we do for free time. I can even show you the different math sequences, you know? I mean, this is what we are unpacking consistently to how many AP courses are offered at our school compared to other schools. And again, when people say things like, we offer too many, we're actually under the gun compared to a Palo Alto or Laguna Beach. We're equivalent to schools like El Segundo and Palisades. You know, they're 20 to 21 or 24, but there are schools that have, there's 37 APs out there. There are schools that are nearing that, Harvard Westlake is full AP. So if we want to compete and compare and contrast, you know, if I'm an academically gifted student and I look and say. Okay, they have 37 APs and we have 24 APs, there might be a part of that consideration. of that consideration of where you're going as an institution. So we have to think through that. But the capstone course is to provide real-life experience. So I don't want to dismiss everyone shouldn't be AP, and that's why I like the California Department of Education, is they say things like, who's completed three-course sequence in CTE? The capstone course gives you work-life experience. It is like in Medical Science Academy, it's the innovators, they're going to see their cyanide, getting real-life experience, hands-on. It's going to prep them and prepare them for the college admissions process. And that could be considered... Those are doctoral students that are going to be physicians alongside our high school juniors and seniors, and they're learning on the same apparatus. That's the stuff that I'm talking about, is ensuring that every kid here gets some example of that, then we all in this room can applaud ourselves. That's when I can sleep.
Okay.
Okay?
So Dustin, so I really... I feel strongly about the fact that it shouldn't be about... We have plenty of AP courses. Do we have more? Yeah, we can always have more, that's fine. But for right now, for the AP classes we have, we have students that when they sign up for a class, they get in their first day, and the teacher gives them a contract. You're in my class, bring this home, you have to sign it, your parents have to sign it. In an AP class, does that say you're taking the AP test? If there's financial hardship, discuss it, whatever, and we can work on that. That's not a roadblock. So take that roadblock. Otherwise, you're... Everybody who takes this is taking the test. Let's start there, right? And then we shift to the instructors of those AP courses to say, we need... And we know the results, right, of the AP exam, so we know where we need improvement. So these are things that we can tackle, okay? So these are my suggestions, as one board member, that you brought it up as part of the presentation for this report. And I think it's a manageable approach to helping improve our scores, although, like Dr. Stern said, it's not everything, the US... But it's more important to infuse that sense of commitment and responsibility in our students, right? That really should be what this is about. You sign up for an AP class, you take the AP test. You see this through, right? You see this through, and we'll help you, but you have to see it through, okay? That's, I think... And that will show something. If we can say 100% of our kids who take AP classes, take the exam, okay? Check that one off. Number two, 100% of kids who take the exam, pass the exam. Check that off, okay? And we work towards those two goals right now, beside... Before we muck it up with a whole bunch of other stuff. Now, moving off from APs, because we've heard enough of those two letters. The college career indicators and the proficiency and performance, talked about, you know, Ds and Fs and C minus and all this stuff. But once again, it gives me the opportunity to bring up that somewhere between elementary school and middle school, we're losing a lot of kids, okay? I happen to believe it's this theory of the C, right? I brought this up before. If we make the C in our district the F, then I think we can work harder into providing the proper intervention. Because if you're an AB student and you get a C, you had a rough time in that class. If you're not an AB student and you get a C, you're a CD student, right? That's a different story. And maybe you get all Cs. A kid who's getting all Cs should completely be on our radar 100% of the time. It shouldn't be. So the fact that the indicators that pick up the Ds and Fs, that you were saying that Mr. Stewart, the software kicks up... Really, we have to get these kids from slipping through the cracks, okay? From an early age, right? I often felt that not enough kids leaving elementary school are proficient enough. Yes, maybe they're better in the CASP testing, but for CASP, they're not writing five-paragraph essays. It's Scantron, right? So what is our... In the end, what is our indicator that these kids can really write? It's us. And we have to double-check how we're looking at that. Because I think we are moving students through six through 12 that cannot write. They can take a multiple-choice test, but they cannot write. And we need to get real about that, okay? So I'm adamant about trying to include Cs when we're looking at students, but Cs in relationship to the rest of their grades, right? If it says C once in a while, it's an outlier, that's not a red flag to me. A C that's accompanying other Cs and Ds is a red flag to me. And those students should have the attention and support. Last but not least, I know Senor Lopez brought up the foreign language pathway, and I just wanted... I know it's on the agenda, but you brought up the biliteracy also in the report, so I guess I will bring it up. I have discussed this with some of you on staff, but I really strongly believe that, one, the structure we have now, where being able to waive a high school year in middle school. When we went to middle school, we had to take a foreign language, and it wasn't an elective, and it didn't count for anything in high school. When you got to high school, you were either in honors or regular, but you were at one, right? Whatever it was, you started all the... I believe there should be some sort of comprehensive proficiency exam in all foreign languages that place kids in high school. Now, whether that exam is the final in eighth grade, if that can be done, but it has to include speaking and listening. It can't just be a multiple-choice exam in a foreign language. Because the real crux of understanding foreign language is being able to speak it and listen to it. And I would strongly advocate to look into, how do we get a placement exam like colleges do, so when you show up to high school, you are actually where you should, not because what you did in middle school? Because I think there's an inconsistency in learning a language at that age, not mastering it, not practicing it over the summer, you know, not utilizing it every day. That all is a problem. The summer slide in a foreign language could be very detrimental to a student. So I strongly believe that if that's something we can look into, if that's a possibility, that we construct the final exam at the end of eighth grade to help place them properly. Not because you took three years of a language, but to really show what you know to go in the right place. So you're not putting kids in the wrong classes in high school because they want to get to an AP in their sophomore year or their junior year, when they really are not ready for it. So... And honestly, I mean, it kind of should go with every subject like that, but that'd be a really tall, little glass of water to drink.
Yeah, but that's part of that, just not foreign language, but the other, the science, social methods, what we're utilizing in WEA is it's going to provide us a lot of formative information on where those kids need to exit in each grade. So that's the nice part. And I, again, thank the community teachers, everybody. It's a lengthy assessment. It did provide us a lot of data to unpack for our current students, to make sure that they're currently placed in the right places for math, science, and English. And again, we'll look at it in January, and we'll do that at the end of the year, but I hear you around working with world language on utilizing... We have the common assessment, we have the same curriculum, they have the same curriculum now with the Vista Learning. We were able to adopt it, if you recall, in the spring. We're having a trainer come back out in November 1st to work with our teams, both Spanish and French, Hebrew. If you guys recall, have adopted a new curriculum two years ago when we got the new teacher. And then now we have a middle school teacher that uses the same as the high school. So it'll all be one comprehensive 6-12 team.
Are students who complete a full pathway of foreign language, including the APs in that language, expected to be fluent?
No. Yeah, to get a five... I'm sorry, I looked at you, but to even get a five on an AP would not be considered fluency.
They're pretty fluent. They're pretty fluent because the vocabulary is very big. And I mean, we use very technical vocabulary, it's very advanced grammar. And the algies that they listen to, the readings that they do, they come from original sources. They come from like video programs in Spain, they come from like TV shows in Argentina. In fact, and they also... And I also have them like get used to like different accents, because everything that they get in AP, now in the AP class, to get them ready for the exam, in the AP exam is the same way.
I took the AP and SAT in Spanish at this high school, yeah. And I would say that I was fluent, and then I did a study abroad, and I was dreaming in Spanish. So I would say that if you're getting a five on that AP exam, you're good, yeah.
They're very fluent. If they get a five, I have samples of it. The way they write it is...
Do you sleep in Spanish?
Do you dream in Spanish? I was dreaming in Spanish at that time.
Who I dreamed?
So I just... I want to wrap up my own.
Sorry, sorry.
Just Aussie. Just my senior. Thank you, Senor Lopez. I think if we lean toward our emphasis being on mastery of material as opposed to getting through, right? That we really truly want our students to master at whatever level they're at. They're not... Proficient should not be the goal, it should be mastery. And I think that's rooted back down in elementary school, can really help if we build our instruction around that, which I assume a lot of teachers do already. But really hammer it in that, you know, Cs aren't good enough, just getting by isn't good enough, mastery is good enough. We're going to help you get there. We don't expect you to do it on your own. That's what we're here to do, right? In the end, we're... We are the educational institution. We should be helping do that.
What's the... To your point, what's the teacher's role in all of this? And I would ask, what is administration? How is this trickling down to the teacher, to the classroom? And if there are any new or modified expectations, you know? So we're talking about Ds, Cs, Ds and Fs. If a student is getting a C minus in this, you know, Spanish class that maybe they're not, you know, as ready for as one would hope, is an email going home from parent... From teacher to parent to say, hey, your student's in my class, they're bordering on a D, I would like for you to ensure that they come to me at lunchtime? I mean, so what I'm saying is, your architecture and your continued, you know, engineering, your value engineering at all, so you're doing already great as compared to a couple years ago, and I can already see where this is going to go with you in the next two years. But how are we circling the loop with the actual educating in the classroom?
Yeah, I think, and I'm going to kind of go back to Principal Stewart, is conversations always have been, not in isolation, meaning like in the superintendent or superintendent of schools, leadership conversations are had, brought to, whether there be summer workshops, whether there be staff meetings, whether there be like the 6-12 vertical articulation or vertical articulation, like where we're looking at additional access points for math, for support or advancement. Once those things are kind of hammered out at that level, then unfortunately, but fortunately too, as a former teacher myself, then ownership does go back into the classroom, right? As an administrator, we can encourage and try to enforce as much feedback from teachers to students, but also to parents. Last year, one of our strategic plan goals was always to increase feedback to all. Feedback from administration to teachers, teachers to students, families to the community, to the district, and we're consistently trying to work on that piece. And so that's where, you know, kind of even the grading practices with Dr. Vista, unfortunately, Dr. Scon and Mrs. Berchem had left, but they could have spoke slightly on that, is what is happening within those classrooms around ed code and grading practices and stuff? And what do we have control over as policymakers, as an administration? And then what we really don't have control over and...
I would be interested...
You know, the right people on the bus.
Yeah. I mean, I would be interested to continue this conversation in another way. Noah, you touched on it too, some things are site-specific, but I would be interested to know in your mind and in your mind, what are policy, you know, specific, meaning the board's purview? And so I welcome further conversation.
To your point, you mentioned something about the policy has a D in it, right?
Correct.
Yeah, exactly.
So that is us. That is something we should...
Exactly.
So we can look at that.
Yeah. So please, I would say, as you unpack this conversation, and then Mandy, I know, as you unpack this conversation, if there are any comment that was made, I would ask if leadership team can go back and look at it and see if there is truth to those suggestions, because we do all care. And so you could kindly review them and see, hey, you know, is this person suggesting something that could be beneficial that we've touched on but haven't had time to address? I would ask if you could for sure do that. Additionally, as a board, I mean, we are so committed to the academic progress and to supporting our district in making academic progress. So if there are things that you feel like, well, this is out of my hands, it's a board policy, let's set a time, a few weeks from now, where you can bring those to us and we can consider them and try to make things better. Please.
One last thing, because you had brought it up here. The... I'm sorry, Mandy.
Yeah.
So I had a question on areas, because as a parent right now, fortunately with that clock running down in the district as a parent, there is easy access as a parent for my child's performance, right? And teachers tend to keep their grades input relatively current. So at any time, I don't have to be told if my child is getting a C in class or whatever. I can look and I'll look. So do all parents, are they required to use that app and keep their stuff? Because I'm just wondering how easy it is, how easy we have made it for parents to keep track of their child's progress? And if that's something we can encourage parents to do to get ahead of these situations where they would need extra support, that a kid may be slipping through the cracks slowly and we're not noticing, but maybe the parent notices.
No, there's an alert that you can set.
Yeah.
Like what has happened to me, I get like, it's like skywritten, it's like they call my neighbor, they call...
Right. What I'm saying is, that's something that we should make sure parents know how to get to.
It's a combination, because there is a responsibility, obviously, to keep grades current, but also for families to be checking in.
Both ways.
And when we can see, we have the ability to look to see who does and who doesn't. I had to call a parent today, and they haven't looked all year. So that also happens.
I mean, along the same line of the grades, I'd like to also hear from you, or if it's not today, but maybe it's with Dr. Scon, as you referenced earlier, about this grading system that this little hacker brought up, because I would like to know more about that.
Yeah, I would love to be able to have that separate conversation.
That doesn't settle with me at all.
Yeah. It's nothing new, it's nothing... It's... So I don't want people to be alarmed that there's a district initiative, because there isn't a district initiative. It's all about philosophic... It just... There's a philosophy, there's a methodology, and it's a bigger conversation that's been going on forever in teaching when it comes to assessments and grading. It's a much bigger conversation. But I think having this conversation tonight is really good. And the other thing I just want to say really quick is, a lot of some of the things that have been talked about, like with the writing process and quality, we don't have to look that far. I mean, look at what we're doing in our strategic plan when it comes to, especially at the middle school level, and looking at CERs. And really, and that's the teachers working with the administration, because they have also said, look, that the writing process is critical. And so this is a really school-wide attempt to try to, you know, improve the writing of middle school students before they come into high school.
But improve the writing of elementary school students before they get to middle school, because elementary school students can get by, do well in math and science, and maybe being okay in writing, but there should be a flag that says, you know what, they're going to get eaten alive in middle school, and then just wait till they get to high school, they're going to get demolished, yeah.
But the LE is not an issue.
What?
We're seeing that more so in math.
Right.
The LE is not an issue. We're doing pretty good.
I would say the other thing that, and Dustin had talked about this, just that what we're fortunate about having is really good data from NWEA. Because we really do need to look at without, you know, it's not a gotcha. I mean, we're going to be able to have the data so that we can look at that to determine whether, is this an issue of materials? Is this an issue of kids that just don't know what the standards are? Is this an issue that in this particular grade level or this teaching group that we had first-year teachers here? Like, we finally are going to have this pool area of data so that we can find out those things, because otherwise, you are in a position where you're like, maybe it's the textbook or maybe, you know, we don't know what that is.
I mean, I appreciate that, you know, from last year, when doing strategic plan and setting those goals, and then we saw this coming and then reacting to that, and then, Dustin, to your credit and your team, coming back with how are we going to address that and putting in the different assessment tools and putting more focus on the team teaching and meeting and your PLCs and what have you. I think that's really important, and I think what we're seeing is like, how does that get translated into the classroom? And that I appreciate that that takes time. And I work hearing about it, and I'm seeing it... When I read the newsletters from each of the principals at the elementary school, this information is coming back. So this is the first year where I'm really seeing that coming back, where they're talking about the assessments, they're talking about ask your child about X, Y, or Z, or this information is coming back. ask your child about X, Y, or Z, or this information is coming back to you. So this is the first time I'm really seeing it translate down to the school site. So I guess the next question is, is it going from the school site into the classroom? And I think that takes time, and I can see the focus, and I can see, you know, when people say we're not talking about education, we've talked, we, we do talk about education a lot. And we've, the conversations around the strategic plan and the multiple conversations that we had, and you think, count up how many hours we spent last year in doing so and having those conversations, we're, we're having a lot more conversation in the last two years around education and how we're educating than we, we certainly did prior. So I, I think it is a progress, but, I mean, it's a process, but I, I do, you know, we, we are seeing, you know, we really need to see it happen in the classroom. So that's with the teachers and training the teachers and communicating with the families and really giving them those tools to make that happen. And I appreciate that we have the tutoring and the, the summer school. I, I think all of those things are all going to contribute to this. But, and I appreciate that you're responding with all of these plans, but I do think the focus is making certain that it's actually happening where it should happen.
Dr. Stern?
What, what I've seen that really works in schools, and I, I imagine you guys do this, if you look first at the, at the reading and writing model, and how, you know, the, the elementary schools are doing, really, from that snapshot data, they're doing quite well in both the math and the English. But, so, I mean, we have some amazing principals, right? So you have that leadership there, and then let's say there's three chairs for, you know, of the math department or something for, per school, and then they're, they're like four times a year or something, they spend all day looking at data, and, right, incrementally, and they see, okay, these are the kids that are identified. So when we meet again, we're going to see if these kids have come up to benchmark. And, you know, you're just focusing on math at this point, let's say. And then, over the course of the year, through that leadership team, so you have the, the principal who's meeting with those, those four chair people who are either compensated, or if not compensated, they get flex time for, for being, you know, for being leaders for that, they disseminate some of that information to the other teachers. And so rather than like going from a reactive standpoint where we say, oh, the kids are getting, you know, we were talking just now about, well, the C should be the new F, eh, okay, that's reactive. Let's talk about how we can put in a systemic way of dealing with the data that we have in our schools. We have great principals and wonderful teachers, and making math one of our, our priorities and goals that at a principal level. And then, yes, and then we can look at being reactive in terms of, you know, we, we want to discourage Cs and stuff like that. But I really don't think that going down from a policy down approach is really what's going to get our kids to, you know, do well in math. That's more reactive and punitive. And I, I would just like to see some of the leadership really focus on the math element, because the English, English language arts, you know, is, is pretty strong. Even though, to your point, yes, writing is a complex matter. It's tough, it's harder to evaluate how someone has done with their writing. But we've done a pretty good job with literacy, I mean, just based on the snapshot of the cast. But math is something that I think on a, on a site-based level with data four times a year, I think that there could really be a linear way to remediate this, rather than going from policy down.
But to be, my understanding is that's what you're putting into place this year. That's what, that's what they're doing this year, so.
Good.
The thing we talked about with policy only was regarding Ds and how that triggers possible intervention.
Or more access to the APs.
And, and you see, yeah.
Or more access to the APs.
So, so I'd like to wrap this up. If we're, if we're feeling cozy, that's great. I do want to, I do want to remind everybody that we're here because, because we recognize that there's room for improvement, right? That's why we asked for the study session, to under, to understand it better, so we can guide better. It's, it's, we can celebrate our, our wins. We always have wins in this district. We have incredible people in this district. In order to succeed in anything that we are talking about today, it's, it's going to be a multi-pronged approach. It's not going to be, oh, the teachers are going to fix this problem. Oh, the admin is going to fix this problem. It's not going to happen that way. It's going to happen because, because the parents and the students and the teachers and the admin and the board are going to look at the problem and all make adjustments to help. So I really want to stress that, because I know that, that in conversations like we have today, we, we start leaning in one direction, oh, it's all going to go to this, or it's all, no, we can't let ourselves do that. We all have to take ownership in order to make this succeed.
I just do want to ask Justin to reiterate, you know, what of that is happening, because I really, my understanding is that's what our approach has been for this coming year that we're in right now, with your scheduled data meetings and really trying to do exactly what you're talking about, Noah. So I just want to be fair to the work that you've done and that, that thinking that you're doing and putting into place, so that people know that that's the approach you're taking this year.
Absolutely. So just to reiterate, and I have a, a principal, one of our assistant principals here, is we utilize our Wednesday morning schedules as one small piece of this bigger puzzle, of being able to deliver staff meetings, department meetings, to give them a common time to collaborate, and then also specific PLC time, or specifically unpacking data, essential questions or big ideas that they want to drive through. In addition to, when we do assess, we do follow up immediately with all parties included. So like, all the English teachers were together, and then all the math teachers, Drew and Shannon were in the room to help unpack. What does that mean? What is, what's next steps? Where are we going? In addition to myself being involved in that process. And so absolutely, we're going to keep going in this format all the way up until, you know, the end of the school year. And even, we are already planning, like, right at the end of the school year, we want to reconvene again, you know, like when most people want to run off to summer, we're like, we're already setting dates of like, okay, this is where we're going to, while we're in the moment, unpack that data in preparation for the following school year. So this, those dates are already on the calendar, people have already been invited, you know, all those types of things. So yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Dr. Horvath, you had something?
Yeah, the HR guy came in on education. I think, I just wanted to say it's commendable to the board, the community, that having worked in some of these districts that we're talking about, Palos Verdes, Torre, and some of the other districts, having the ongoing conversation is important. It's critical, right? It's critical, because there's so many different things that you can do. These conversations take place in those districts as well. They're looking at Beverly Hills, you know, when I was in PV, we talked about Beverly Hills and the great things, because there's so many different districts that do great things. And I'm just writing down some notes. I was just talking about how it's important, we can benchmark, we can do, there's so many great examples. We just have to focus in on what's important. What do we feel Beverly Hills pathway is to excellence, to educational excellence, and really set on a path and be on that mission. And what I will commend us on is the strategic plan has done that.
Agreed.
We are very focused on where we want to go, and we have continued to narrow that focus. And it's important to, to follow through with that and do our benchmark and checkpoints to make sure we're holding each other accountable, because that internal accountability, while we can look at every other district and every other metric, US News and World Report, until we have internalized accountability, that's when we will really make, make big moves, so.
All right. Mrs. Marcus, do you have anything else to add before we adjourn?
He's muted.
She might be muted.
Okay.
Let's wait and see if she can, she might not have. Sometimes it takes a bit.
We'll take a Marcus moment?
Yeah.
I want to.
Did you just call Mrs. Marcus? I was, did you say?
Answer to question 12. No, I wanted to see if you had anything else to add before we adjourn.
No, I think that I'm very grateful for this discussion. I hope that the community realizes that we have our work cut out for us, but we, and I also feel that it, it shows that we, we really, we meet and we want them to do better. And we want to do better.
Thank you.
And I agree, by the way, with Dr. Stern's comments about the math. As you know, I've been on that kick since I started, and I really did mention it, but I'm still very disappointed in our math scores. And I also want to look at the science scores and what's going to happen, how we can improve on the science scores, because I thought they were considerably low. And that's about it. So I just wish everybody a pleasant evening. I'll be back next Tuesday, I hope.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Thank you, staff. Thank you, K-Bab, for reporting today. The members of the community that are actually came here and participated, we appreciate your participation. It's parents that are involved that create a better school district, so I appreciate it. With that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches.
Yeah, I need, sorry, guys, I need the clearinghouse stuff.
Yeah, we need to give it a spin.